Everyone, and thank you for coming. It's my privilege and pleasure to welcome you to our town hall meeting. My name is Jill Green, and I'm the Communications Manager for the city. And I want to invite everyone to please sign in if you haven't already so we can have a record of who is all here. And there are refreshments in the back. And just to let you know, the restrooms are around the corner. Couple of housekeeping things. I wanted to let you know that some of our council members are planning to join us, but they have previously seen this presentation, so they're going to join us for the Q and A, so they can be here for that part. And Mayor Herring senses regrets because he is not able to be here tonight. He's actually doing something very fun. He is watching his daughter graduate, who is getting her master's degree. So he flew to Phoenix this morning. So I want to introduce our staff. This is Londy Lindell. She's our city administrator. Mark Regos is our Public Works Director. And Don DeBerg is a project engineer. And then, our presenter tonight is Nicole DiNovio. She's a consulting water hydrologist with Goldar and Associates. And she has her PhD in civil engineering, as well as her license in geology. She is a senior consultant associate with Goldar and Associates, and she has been with the city on their water rights for the last decade. So after the presentation, we will have a Q and A period, and so she's going to just be presenting, and then we'll turn it over to you so you can ask questions and provide comments. So without further ado, actually, I'm going to introduce Lon-- sorry, Mark. He would like to say a few words.
Thanks, Jill. Thanks for everybody coming out tonight. I know you probably have lots of things to do, but this is pretty interesting stuff. I'm a licensed civil engineer. I've been working here for about four years or so, so I'm the person responsible for streets, water, sewer, wastewater treatment plant, private development, utilities, et cetera. Just a quick, three-minute blurb on our waters, our water rights and our permit. Our original water permits from DOE is what's called Mount Si Springs. It's basically springs that flow underneath Mount Si. It's about half-mile upstream of the river. This is considered a senior water right. This permit has been in existence for many decades, beginning in the mid to late 1990s. The city of North Bend began a tenure moratorium due to lack of water. This lasted until almost 2010. The city, in the 1990s when this was happening, the city self-reported the violation. It was about 15 percent over the maximum allowable amount. And the city was just taking too much from that Mount Si Springs, but it was a math error, apparently. Obviously, I was not around then. It was 25 years ago, a long time ago. Had to do with an acre-feet conversion in the math. What we have as part of our permit is that Mount Si Springs, where the water flows out of the mountain, three CFS, three cubic feet per second of water has to flow over the weir that is basically the headwaters of the creek that's attributable to the Stokolami River. The city is allowed to take the delta. So in the springtime, when there's lots of snow melt in the water, there might be eight CFS flowing out of there, so we're allowed to take five CFS. But in August, September, October, there might only be four CFS flowing out of there. So we're only able to take that one CFS. Anyways, those are some of the details we can get into later if you want. In the early 2000s, the city spent $6 million in legal fees and infrastructure costs to obtain a new water right. That's the city's second water right called Centennial Well. It took 10 years to engineer it, permit it, and build it. Nicole was part of that process, and also our mayor, Ken Herring, as well. There's a very unique, one-of-a-kind mitigation system we have in Washington State. It's a mitigation system, and what it is, it's a hobo spring. There's a source up there for any time the Stokolami River is low at three points, we have to drop for drop. Anytime we're pumping water out of Centennial Well, we have to mitigate. We ascend water that flows towards Rattlesnake Lake, and we take that water over to Boxley Creek. So that came online in about 2008. It's not cheap. We pay Seattle Public Utilities for this mitigation source. It's several hundred thousand dollars per year, and it doesn't go to drinking water. It's just solely mitigation water. And that was signed by Department of Ecology, the city's second water right, in 2007. The city has been using a combination of Mount Si Springs and Centennial Well for the past 10 years, and has three large reservoirs on the hillside above I-90 where this water is stored. In 2017, the city installed a variable frequency drive pump at Mount Si Springs, which is more effective at capturing that delta. Instead of having the one speed pump, now it's a variable pump. So the city, we're monitoring it every day, always has at least three CFS going over the weir, and that bypasses the city's collection system. That's, in a nutshell, what we have.
Now, we're ready for Nicole. Please welcome Nicole.
Mark did an excellent job of providing an overall summary. I'm going to dive into some of the details that Mark just went through, and hopefully that'll help frame any conversation or discussion later. And as Jill mentioned, I started my career with Goldar, I think, 12 or 13 years ago, and then quickly thereafter, started working on different components of the water right work and studies for North Bend. So I have a lot of history. I know a lot about how we got here, and so hopefully I'll help frame a little bit of that when I'm going through these different water rights and what the studies mean. And there's a lot of detail, so you'll have to bear with me on some pretty detailed technical things. So thanks in advance for your patience. Okay. I have to turn this on. Okay. So just top level, we'll talk a little bit about Washington State water rights, municipal water law, and then, again, the specifics of the city's water rights. Especially, we'll focus on things like the characteristics, limitations, and some of the system updates that have occurred over the last several years. So, Washington State water law. It's a doctrine of prior appropriation, and what that really means is first in time, first in right. And that means that senior water rights are satisfied first, and then junior holders of water rights can be curtailed if a senior water right isn't fulfilled or is limited. Water rights have a permit phase, which is an authorization to allow a specific amount of water in a defined place, season, and purpose. That permit, once it's perfected, becomes a certificate. And that certificate means that it's come to full beneficial use for its intended purpose, and it's been recorded with appropriate property deed. A water right that's in good standing can continue to be used without interruption, or it could also be put into a bank if you wanted to temporarily halt that. Or, for a municipal right, it isn't subject to something that's called a use-it-or-lose-it principle. And that is where, if a water right is not used for a long period of time, it would be relinquished. It means that it would just sort of disappear, but that doesn't happen with a municipal water right. For municipal suppliers, there's a certain amount of planning and long-term requirements that are needed for successful city planning, and for growth, and for changes in industry and similar. And so, that water right for a municipality isn't subject to that use-it-or-lose-it principle. Instead, a municipality has flexibility, and that flexibility requires a lot of planning, a lot of planning documents, interaction with Department of Health, interaction with Department of Ecology, and it requires system leakage standards and conservation measures. So, again, a permit and stream flows, which are the level of water in a river, may have a priority to a water right. So what that means is, at certain times, and it depends on which river basin you're in, the river may actually be the prior appropriation, meaning that it has the senior water right to something junior. And so, we'll talk about that a little bit more. It's important because it applies to one of the city of North Bend's water rights, but not the other. And, as I mentioned, municipal water rights are not subject to that use-it-or-lose-it principle, and they are required for conservation. A conservation measure is required for those. So just a quick look at what the city's water rights are right now. As Mark said, there's a spring, and that's Mount Si Spring. It's right here. And it has a particular pumping capacity. This is its application number, and its priority date is in 1965. So it's a relatively old water right, but not the oldest water right out there. And water rights have different components. One is, there's an instantaneous withdrawal. So that means, when you turn on the pump that day, that's the highest you can possibly-- the highest rate you can possibly pump. And so, for the Mount Si right, that is 2250 gallons per minute, or 3.2 million gallons per day. Then there's a maximum amount, how much you can take for an entire year. And for Mount Si, that's 336 acre-feet each year. As Mark mentioned, many, many years ago, and it obviously predates all of us that are sitting here, there was an inadvertent error in a calculation by the city. And so, as I've heard it, the person who did the calculation may have used the instantaneous numbers, thinking that those were the annual numbers or something. I know Mark said acre-feet per year, but anyway, so that, it has implications on how we came to where we are now. The second water right for the city is the Centennial Well, and you'll see in documents or other things, it's called NB3. It was the third test production well that we drilled in the valley, so it has a demarcation of North Bend dash three. And then the city renamed it the Centennial Well because of the timing of permitting, basically. And it has a nicer ring than NB3. And that's a water right permit, and it has a maximum pumping capacity of 2,500 gallons per minute, and a maximum instantaneous withdraw of 2,646. And then the annual was based on a projection of 50-year growth for the city, which is considered full build-out. And at that time, it was just over 3,000 acre-feet for each year. The city still has two water right permits in place. As you can see, this has an A, so this was an initial application that was split into two parts. This second part includes two additional wells, NB1, the first well that we drilled, that's actually very close to here, and NB2. And those may, if the city chooses to go through a permitting process, could become future water supplies for the city. And then, there's an additional application for Mount Si Spring to expand the use of the spring. And that priority date is 1999. And then, the application split keeps the same priority date, which is 1992. Everyone with me so far?
Can you repeat that one more time, that last part? About the dates?
Oh, so each water right has a date, which is sort of the application date, or the-- for very old water rights, they're the first time in use. And so, each one of those dates becomes important because the date that you start using the water, or the date that you made your application, gives you your place in that priority line that I was talking about. So the older the date, the more senior the water right, and the first in time.
What about annual withdrawal for those additional wells and springs?
Because these are applications, they don't yet have an annual amount that's been requested. Okay, we're good? Okay. So one of the maps here was the local water purveyors, and it's just kind of good to know your neighborhood, right? So the city is here in green. So the city of North Bend Water System supplies water to this whole area here in green. The city of Stokolami supplies water to the area here in blue. And then the SLA Water Association is this area in, I guess, pink. And you can see that they're, you know, depending on which water system, there's very close lines, and they follow various neighborhoods, and, you know, there's a lot of history that's gone into having who's on which water system, and so on and so forth. So this map is an accumulation of all of those different decisions, and who went with which water system and created what connection. The city urban growth area is this black city, where the city limits are right here in this black line. So, where are we with water use for the city of North Bend? On the X-axis here are years. So 2008 was the first year that we started really tracking where we were with respect to kind of the baseline for the new water right. And the total water usage is up here in the gray bar, and then the number is reported, and this is an annual volume acre-feet per year. The green bar is the Centennial Well, or the new groundwater right, that was granted and started being used on May 27, 2009. And what you can see is that the gray bars provide the total amount of water usage each year from 2008 to 2017. And so, a couple things to note are that, first, the water system hasn't had a significant amount of change in the total amount of water used. And as soon as the senior right now had a junior right, the water was split between these two sources. So now, rather than violating what was the requirement for Mount Si, which is here in this dashed black line, we now have water that is both taken from Mount Si and taken from the Centennial Well, which are the green bars. So, as you can see, there's some years where that senior water right hasn't been used up to its maximum capacity. And then there's years like 2017, when, as Mark was talking about, there was a large project at Mount Si Spring, where the Centennial Well was used much, much more than in previous years. But again, this dashed line is the senior water right, maximum capacity, and then the green bars are how much has been taken from the Centennial Well. And over this timeframe, there's been about 178 new connections, from 2012, which is our best date, where we have a good amount of information, to 2017. Anticipated demand over the first 10 years was approximately 250 acre-feet. So we're quite a bit below that. We were expecting, based on demand, to have a significant amount of increased demand at this point, 10 years in, or so that, about that. Just so you know where we stand right now, there have been 332.9 acre-feet this year taken from the Centennial Well.
Nicole, when I first saw this chart, this seemed very counterintuitive to me because we've obviously grown in our community, right? And she mentioned we added a little under 200 new connections, and I thought, well, that can't be right, because our water use should have gone like this. And so I said, how do you explain that our water use has not only remained static, but it's gone slightly down? And what you explained to me is that because people have been adding, or new construction adds more, and people buy more, you know, appliances, front-loading washer-dryers, and they're using, you know, the new construction uses more conserving, you know, water pressure, and we're getting better at planting drought-tolerant landscaping, that we didn't see, I guess, the uptick that I expected. So can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, just even a show of hands, how many people in the room have put a front-loading washing machine or a low-flow toilet in in the last 10 years? I know I have. So, I mean, as we add new growth, as people make those updates, as they get a new kitchen faucet that has the flow aerator, or you replace your bathroom faucet, or whatever it is, you know, it does dramatically tend to change your water use, and you do it incrementally, but as a whole community, when you start doing this, and when, you know, everyone's making these changes, the outcome is that overall, as a community, there's growth, but there's also conservation at the same time, as those technologies improve. The other thing that's happened in the city is effort to look for leaks in the water system. There's obviously big financial consequences when you have to pay another municipality for water that you're losing to try to find what those worst offenders are. It's part of the expectations of the municipal water law, that all of those leak requirements. But certainly, we know that there's a focused effort on making sure that those are minimized to the extent possible. There's always work to do. More recently, as we've been working through some updates to these numbers, we've also had the opportunity to identify outlier users of water, and are working on trying to identify, is it a leak? Is it what's causing them to be much larger than maybe we would have anticipated compared to other houses or businesses or whatever? So those will all come together and help to reduce these numbers on an annual, inter-annual basis. Did that help, Londy?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So moving on from here, so this is how the city is currently using water, and which water supply that they're choosing to use over the course of the year. And certainly, that senior water right, it's the preference to use that one, right? It's the, doesn't require mitigation, and it's the senior water right in the basin. So we'd like to use that one as much as possible. And that's Mount Si Spring. For those of you who haven't had a chance to see any pictures of it, and this is a picture of the weir. And it's hard to see with this lighting, but that's a picture of the weir, and that's where all that three CFS has to go over, and there's a lot of monitoring that goes into that at this point. So, as I mentioned, and Mark mentioned, this is a water right certificate. It's a perfected water right, which means it's been put to full beneficial use, and inadvertently put to more than full beneficial use. 1965 is the priority date, and I've already gone through, sorry, these numbers for the maximum withdrawals. And then, as we've mentioned, whenever this water right is used, so whenever any water is being withdrawn, there must be three CFS going over that weir. So during, you saw when we were looking at the water use, that in 2017, this water right hadn't been used nearly as much as we normally would have. And this was part of a project to make more efficient use of the spring plant. And part of that was to put what are called variable frequency drives in. And what that is, is it's an engineering control, so that when you turn on a pump, you don't just turn it on at a huge volume, but you can adjust its volume to set the right amount to make sure that all of that water is going over the weir. Two of the pumps have three, so there are three pumps at that station. Two of them were updated with these variable frequency drives, and they have a flow rate of between about 50 and 800 gallons per minute. So what that means is, at the low end, if one of the pumps is turned on for all day, it can supply pretty much all of the city of North Bend's water supply at that 50 GPM range. That's the full consumption of the city. So now we can set a very low pumping rate, so we don't have big flashes, big changes in the amount of water over the weir, or the amount of water in the spring, and just set like a nice, low, constant supply into the tanks for the city. At the same time, there was a lot of instrumentation updates. New probes were put in place, new monitoring sensors, and all of those were attached to what's called the SCADA system. And that SCADA system is supervisory control and data system.
Acquisition.
An acquisition system. And that SCADA system is basically the brains that collect all the information from all of these different probes all over, and they're all the way up in the Cedar watershed as well, that all gets reported down to one centralized system, and it's a database, and all of that information gets integrated together. One of the probes that was instrumented out at Mount Si is a probe that says, based on how much water is now going over the weir, let me select what the right pumping rate is, so that that water right is not violated. Final construction on this project was in the middle of September in 2017. So now to the Centennial Well. Any questions before I keep going on Mount Si?
I'm just wondering, with the efforts to reduce flooding impacts downstream, is there any chance that during high flows, we are able to capture more water from that area, instead of just letting it go down the river?
For Mount Si, right, there's, it's a big spring and then pool, so, and then there's horizontal wells that kind of come down into the spring. So the only amount of water that's pumped is the water that the city needs to maintain tanks, supply people, and maintain fire flows. So additional pumping beyond that is not something that is currently contemplated.
How much historical data do we have about flow over the weir at Mount Si Springs? I mean, I've looked at some of this, and I see cases where, you know, it falls below three CFS in very dry years. How far back does our data go? Because that's a function of how much water we get from Mount Si.
Right, Michael, I'm not sure exactly how far back the data go. Those data were collected as part of the operation of the spring plant, so I just don't remember how far back they go. Okay, to the Centennial Well. As we mentioned, this is a water right permit, and that means that it still is yet to be perfected at the maximum volume of water that could be withdrawn. And so, it has a priority date of 1992. We could also add NB1 and NB2 if needed, and they would have different constraints on them, because they have different distances from the Middle Fork and South Fork of the Stokolami River. This is a very high-producing well. It's right in the middle of the city, and it's relatively deep. It's a couple hundred feet deep, and it's completed in a very coarse sequence of sands and gravels. And this water right, with a 1992 priority date, is subject to the WAC 173 507 020, which is the in-stream flow law. And basically what that is, is there was a time in the Stokolami Basin history where the state decided that there were particular flows that needed to occur at different monitoring points within the river basin. And so what that does is it sets what those minimum values are at each one of those points, and I'll talk about that more. But it is important that this water right in particular is junior to the river. So the river takes priority in terms of flows. The permit-to-cert certificate process is this. First, you make your application, you have it approved, you complete your construction, and you put the water to first beneficial use. So that's first drop that gets pumped and consumed by people. And then, as we develop the water right and the capacity-- And then as we develop the water right and the capacity of the system to withdraw all of that water, then it goes through a review process with ecology. And that review process essentially then says, you've completed withdrawing whatever the volume of water is at whatever the maximum instantaneous flow is on an annual basis. And then a water right certificate is issued after what is called a proof of appropriation review. And that's a form, it requires inspection, and there's a process involved. An important date in this is that the permit is issued for a particular period of time. And as I mentioned, the, the planning for this was a 50-year planning process. So the project completion date is 2054. And then the full water use needs to be completed by 2059, based on the current planning. So where did these numbers come from? Uh-oh. What did I do? Thank you. All right. So there were a number of different planning numbers that were used. There was a projection based on the area of the city and what the zoning was and the urban growth area to determine the amount of water that was needed above the existing water rate. In other words, above the .3 MGD at Mount Si Spring. And what you'll notice is in year one, the projected additional demand at the new water right was a very large number. And there was not much growth planned in the first 10 years. But much more growth planned in the next 20 years. And so here are the projected demand numbers for each planning year. And they ramp. So this is the projected demand in million gallons per day and projected demand in acre feet per year. And as I mentioned, this is above the existing water rates. And so this first number accounts for that discrepancy between what was being used at Mount Si and what really was part of the water system that was already, you know, constructed and being used. So that's where that number comes from. And so, as you can see, one of the primary planning years was 2018. So here we are, and that's one of the reasons why we're starting, as many of you know, to take another look at these numbers and see where are we compared to our plan. And so here's one of those looks. The year is down here on the X-axis. So here's 2008 and 2009 where the Mount Si was switched to being some of the withdrawal from the Centennial Well. So the Centennial Well withdrawals are here in orange for each year. And these are a million gallons per day. The blue line is that projection that I just showed you from 2004. And here's our 10-year mark. And then the update was, there was an update done in 2010 as part of the water system plan. And that's the yellow line here. And what you can see is every year, we've been considerably below, even with that really large spring plant project in 2017, below our planning numbers.
And Nicole, because I asked this question when you showed me that, if you go back to that chart, because it seemed like we've stayed pretty consistently at that .3 since the first year, we had to make up for the fact that we had gone over the Mount Si Springs. But after that, we've stayed pretty stable, that it looks like based on year-to-date, we're kind of staying along that same trajectory of that .3 going forward as far as Centennial Well.
Yes, so Centennial Well right now is at, I don't know, an MGD.
Point on that.
It's, oh, sorry. I can show you on another graph, but it's, it's right in here.
Okay.
This water right is subject, as I mentioned, to minimum in-stream flow, which means that the city needs to replace the net stream depletion. So how much water is removed from the river when the well is turned on? And that doesn't happen instantaneously, although it happens relatively quickly. And it smears, meaning that some of it, when I pump today, impacts the river today, tomorrow, and the next day. And that's when most of it occurs, but it does tail off. So 20 days later, there's still a small amount of impact from how much I withdrew from the well today. So what we do on an everyday basis is calculate what the net stream depletion is. So we use a whole series of models, which basically bound the uncertainty in the hydraulic properties between the well and the river. And then we predict what the maximum stream depletion is. And then we credit back the amount of water that goes back into the river via the wastewater treatment plant. It must be calculated every single day. And this mitigation must occur when the stream flows are below the minimum in-stream flow levels. Those minimum in-stream flow levels are at each of the three gauges just downstream at the Sno, on the Snoqualmie River. So the first one is the Snoqualmie gauge, that's right at the Falls. And you've probably seen it. And the next downriver gauge is the Carnation Gauge, and then finally the Monroe Gauge. So all three of those are looked at every single day. They're compared against the legal minimum flow. And when any one of those have triggered at any time in the last 24 hours, mitigation is delivered to the river. We find that the critical time period is July through October. That's when we see the largest frequency of minimum in-stream flow triggers. So just a big overview of what the system looks like. I'm sorry, this is, seems a little bit small in this room. Here are the gauges. Here's the wastewater treatment plant return flow. So here's the Falls. Here's the wastewater treatment plant. Mount Si Spring is here. Well NB3 or the Centennial Well is right here. And it's right in between the two forks of the Snoqualmie River, the Middle Fork and the South Fork. Up here is a gauge that's Boxley Creek. And then what you've heard is that there's a mitigation system which comes off the moraine associated with the Cedar Empowerment. And that water is pumped, actually piped, from the spring down to Boxley Creek and then delivered into the South Fork and then enters the river system. And it was planned that the Salal Wells near Rattlesnake Lake would be a secondary source of mitigation water after the Hobo Springs source. There's also a gauge right up here at the Cedar Lake Masonry Pool. And that Masonry Pool gauge is very important for the city because it provides a early detection about what the water levels are going to be at the spring. There's a lag that's associated, just like the lag from the well to the river. We can do a very good job of estimating based on the level in the pool, about a month and a half later, what the spring flow will be. And that helps the city with planning purposes. As I mentioned, here are some of the minimum in-stream flows. And what I did here was just plot an average year. I picked 1973. It kind of, I looked at a bunch of them. It kind of fell in the middle. And I plotted what the minimum in-stream flow rule was. And you can see it changes through time, so it's higher during the winter and lower in the late summer, early fall, and then it ramps back up. And then, as you can see, this is the time period where, on an average year, it would be triggering, in a low year, it would be triggering, you know, through this whole critical time period. So this is where the graphs get a little bit more complicated. So bear with me, okay? The primary mitigation supply for the Centennial Well is Hobo Springs. Hobo Springs is highly variable in terms of how much water is available during the course of the year. And so the city changes their water system usage in response to the availability at Hobo Springs and Mount Si Springs. And it depends on the year, whether we have a wet winter, a dry winter, a wet spring, a dry spring, so on and so forth. So if we just kind of look on the X-axis here, here are months. And then this is discharges at Hobo Springs. And there's a spring collection box there. It's basically a big concrete box that collects some of the water from Hobo Springs. Not all of it. It's somewhere probably around 60%, we think. So there's a lot of other water that also comes down and avoids that spring box. These are just calculated, or these are just determined values at the, the actual weir box. So it's a subset of the flow. And these lines are just different interpretations of how much water is available. So depending on what dataset you use and whether you're looking at minimum of every single day or the minimum average for the month, or just the straight-up average for the month, you could have widely varying interpretations of how much water is available at the spring. This most conservative...
Nicole, I just want to do a time check because we wanted to have about 40 minutes for questions. And we're already, I know you have a few more slides and we're already a few minutes into the Q and A time.
Okay. Well, we've already taken some questions. So these low-flow values provide the low-level planning numbers that we used for determining likelihood for mitigation supply. And I'll show you that again. Just to give you an idea of how much mitigation water's been used on a daily, or on an annual basis, you can see it's changed a lot. 2015 was a very dry year. So there was a lot of mitigation water used that year. 2016, it came right back down. And then 2017, we had a lot of water used because of that project that I talked about. We're at about 118 this year. So right in here. So one of the things that we needed to do was do some projections on growth. And so this graph shows our projection of how much water would be used after 27 years of growth. So from 2008, in that case, to 27 years later. And what the predicted amount of mitigation would be. So this low line, these are months, this is flow. And this low line is the lower limit or the low bound of what we thought the mitigation requirement would be. The pink line up here is the maximum. And then we looked at the supply of Hobo Springs. So the average amount of water at Hobo Springs is up here, which is way, way above any of the mitigation that would have been required. And then if we took the minimum of every single dataset that we would have ever had, that's this line. So we recognized at the time that we did the mitigation forecasting that Hobo Springs would be variably available depending on what kind of year it was, wet, dry, so on and so forth. And so there were other contemplated mitigation supplies. One of them was as, and this is a planning time bar just to kind of get an idea of when they would be available. Here's the Hobo Springs existing. So we were planning that that would be available over the full 50 years. The Salal Wells were part of the original ROE but have not been brought online. And the plan was to have those online at the beginning of the water right usage. And then there's a, a study that considered a deep groundwater supply as a potential source of water, which would only be really helpful during very, very short duration, very, very low years because it would need to be replenished in the groundwater system. Permitting and expanding Hobo Springs, bringing in the long-tolt. And just note that this is a set that we conceived of over 10 years ago. Certainly, as time goes on, we hope that we can identify some other options. Just a little bit about the Tolt Pipeline. It comes down from the South Fork Tolt Reservoir and would kind of follow this alignment and deliver water into the North Fork of the Snoqualmie River. It would be 4.8 miles in length. There's a water right that the city is working on identifying whether it's a viable mitigation source or not. And so some of you might have heard about that. It's the Cascade Golf Course Water Right. This water right is old. It's actually older than the city's Mount Si right. It's 1960. It was originally a water supply for about 66 houses local to that well. And the Salal Water Association switched to serving those homes when this water right was converted to an irrigation right for the golf course. So it has a 33 acre feet per year, so not a huge water right, but certainly not zero. And it does have a lot of constraints. You can't pump a lot of water. It's a 20 gallons per minute maximum. And there are restrictions on it as well in terms of a monthly basis. And that, those were put in place not because it was a municipal right or supplied houses, but because there was a desire to not have the golf course pump lots and lots of water outside of what the original sort of distribution was during the course of the year for a typical municipal requirement. So on a monthly basis, there is a constraint of how much water of that total can be used with a total acre feet and a percentage. These don't exactly add to one, so it needs to be adjusted according to usage. So that's where the city is with mitigation supplies, planning what the water rights are. And I just wanted to take a second to talk about resiliency and sustainability. And I think when we look at any of these water rates being junior to the river and as we're trying to understand how senior water rights and junior water rights kind of come into play, we want to make sure that we understand how the overall system is behaving. And those are some of the sustainability goals that the city is working on. And I think Landi will be talking a little bit during the questions and answers about different concepts that the city has in terms of addressing peaks and things like this. But something else I wanted to point you to was a really interesting study. It's actually had received interest by the president. It was a multi-year study by Kings, Snohomish, and Pierce Counties, all of the water systems, including East King County Regional Water Association, which City of North Bend, Issaquah, Snoqualmie, Salal, all of the East King County water purveyors are part of. And what it was looking at was the potential for various threats to all of these water systems. And it's been a multi-year study. A lot of money has been spent and a lot of documents are available on what the key findings are. So the website is watersupplyforum.org, so I would encourage you to go there. One of the things that really interested me was they looked at four big key things. They took all of these experts and they said, hey, what are the four things? Or let's brainstorm the things that would make our water systems the most susceptible. And the four things that came out of that were earthquakes, water quality, like a terrorist attack, or a significant change in water quality, maybe from a volcanic explosion, which is not unusual here, drought and climate change, right? So all of these things were considered. And by far, the one thing that they found that the region was least able to accommodate was actually earthquakes. And the valley here is right along one of those earthquake alignments. And the projections are, under the worst-case scenarios, that some of the water systems may take more than 60 days to reinstitute safe service within their water systems. And so this was by far and away the largest risk. And so things that different communities are doing are looking at inerties, looking at water system connectivity to help support each other in future possible worst-case scenarios. So I just wanted to... So I just wanted to point that out to you, so that you can kind of go look at that website. There's a ton of technical information there. There's a lot of planning information there.
And Nicole, we also have just, it's not the whole study, of course, but just a couple notebooks over there that just has a summary of the study's conclusions.
But I just think it's interesting, because it's a really regional look at what the risks are to water systems. So, and just a few summary points, you know, municipal water rights cover the area that is supplied by the city of North Bend. The water demand for the city is completely available across those two water supplies that I talked about. And the demand projections that are the foundation for the water right planning and how everything's being operated now are about 10 years old, a little bit older than that. And so we're in the course of updating all of those numbers, looking at water use on a parcel-by-parcel basis, and really trying to integrate all of this information that we've been collecting over the last 10 years. So it's a huge project, a lot of work, and that study will be submitted to the city of North Bend, to Ecology, for review. And with that, thanks.
Next, we're going to go into our Q and A, but before we do that, I want to introduce our council member, Trevor Kostinich. Thank you for coming. And we're going to get into the Q and A period. And I just, for everyone's sake, if we could limit your questions or your comments, rather, to three minutes, we want to give everyone an opportunity to talk and to ask questions. So just raise your hand, and I'll come around with the microphone, and you can ask your question, and whoever wants to answer will respond.
And Larry, since we're televising this, how are we going to get folks, how are we going to get people on TV since we're televising this? Do they need to go up to the podium, or?
I can record, Jim.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, hi. I'm Cindy Spirey. I work for the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. I just had a clarifying question about the mitigation source. Did you say there was currently a secondary mitigation source, or that's one that's being considered?
So the city has entered into a purchase and sale agreement with the Casc, or with Creekside LLC to acquire 28 acres at the Cascade Golf Course for the 33 acre feet, and that would be a mitigation source. We also have been in negotiations with Salau Water Association, which would then be our third mitigation source. So SPU is our principal mitigation source, and then we're seeking a secondary mitigation
Hi, my name is Gary Fancher. And in the slides that were shown, there was a primary mitigation slide and a 1973 flow chart that you referenced. And if you compared both those charts, obviously the flows are inverse of each other, where the heavy flows are in the winter, we're drawing less, and when the flows are low. And I kind of would really want to know, how can we take that high flow in the wintertime and put it in a tank and then put it back in the river, rather than pumping groundwater out of the ground to put back in the river? It makes no sense at all. It's the total inverse, and if we could take just January, February, we would have more water than we knew what to do with to put back in the river.
You're right. From the standpoint of how much water is available, you know, we all know about the flooding problems and challenges in the valley, right? Really, it's a volume issue, is how do you store that? And there have been a lot of impoundments throughout the basin, and we don't like those, right? Because they affect the ecological system. So, you know, it's a challenge as to how to do that properly. Certainly, some of the aquifer storage options would be desirable. In this basin in particular, there's not a lot of rock that's deep that we could store water in, but it is something that would be of interest. And beyond that, you know, if you look at the long-term climate projections, and there's a really interesting study that was just published by the U.S. Geological Survey about groundwater susceptibility. One of the things that was noted was that this region of the world, that the groundwater aquifers are actually fuller, have more water in them than they had previously. So during the winter, because of those high flows, we've got warmer conditions, more water. A lot of the groundwater system, like here, is actually a larger volume of water. We're seeing more storage in the groundwater basins. That's obviously completely different than someplace like California.
I'd just add that it's very possible to do that. It's just very expensive to do that. So we'd have to build a concrete, underground, mini-kingdom type, so to speak, to hold all that water, and then slowly pump it out. But you'd be talking about a several hundred million-dollar project potentially, so it's just a lot of money, a lot of concrete, a lot of steel, a lot of excavation.
We're just seeing that 4.8-mile whatever line to run, you know, going down 400 feet to find water, there's all costs associated with, you know, the cost of the 80.
Hi, well, that's my first question. First question is, can we get copies of the slides?
Sure.
Thanks. Second question is that the Centennial Well was perfected, is my understanding, based on a mitigation plan that included a second source of mitigation, like the Salau Wells, I think was in the original ROE. And how could the well have been perfected when that secondary mitigation source was never put online? It's been a decade. So that's, I guess, one of my major questions.
So I can speak to whether the water right has been perfected or not, and it has not been. It has been put into use as part of the initial step of the project, and that project completion date is...
2054.
Yeah, 2054.
Okay. So it's not perfected, but the building moratorium was lifted, based on it being on the road to perfection, I guess.
So the way water rights work, Jean, it's a little bit different in that you put it to beneficial use, and then you have this time period where you use it and you perfect the interest. And so we actually have until 2054 to fully perfect the interest. We, like, for instance, we have 3,087,000 cubic, or acre feet, a year, and we're using 1,400 right now. If we don't use all of that acre feet by 2054, we can't perfect that.
Okay.
That makes, or 2059, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the project has to be completed by 54, and then the total volume needs to be...
Has to be used up by 2059, so.
Okay. So we've done a lot of digging. This is part of our group, is the Friends of the Snoqualmie Valley Trail and River. We have a lot of technical folks in our group. And we've been looking at the basins, the watersheds, the Cedar and the Snoqualmie. And from what we can gather, the Salau wells and the Cascade Golf Course well are in the Snoqualmie Basin. So our question is, do you agree with that? And if you do, how can you use water from the Snoqualmie Basin to mitigate the Snoqualmie River, which is in the Snoqualmie Basin?
So what I can answer is that that's a determination that Department of Ecology made as to whether water supplies were applicable as a mitigation supply. It was a proposal by the city of North Bend, and then it was subject to Department of Ecology's review and concurrence. Part of that review and concurrence included consultation with the Talalup Tribe, CALP, which is a non-government organization, Ecology's consultant, which was a specific groundwater group, the Talalup Tribes consultant, which was Key to Waters, and the budding, developing Snoqualmie Tribe at the time was also engaged in that conversation. So all of these different organizations and tribes all came together to address that mitigation plan and to review it.
I guess what we're suggesting is maybe based on faulty science, but that's something we'll get into. The other last question that I have is, you showed some graphs and charts. We'd love to have the background data. We've submitted four public records requests to the city for information to and from, the city, and Goldar, and the Department of Ecology. And this was about three or four weeks ago. I wish Suzie was here, she could tell me exactly. But we've not received anything, except tonight after 5 o'clock, we got a couple of graphs. So what we've asked for and what we want is the detail that feeds the data that you presented tonight, so that our folks, who are highly technically oriented, can start going over those. And the last thing I'd ask for is a meeting with you guys and Goldar before that report comes out, so that you'll know what our questions are, and so that you might be able to address them before we get the draft report that we've requested.
So Jean, this is your opportunity to ask those questions and to meet with the city, but we have, no. You know, if you're, you're welcome to call me. You send many emails a day. We're happy to look at those emails and respond to them, but we have paid a consultant a lot of money, and we're not going to have the consultant meeting with individual citizens. I'm sorry. I'm happy to take your questions, but this report is for a submittal to a regulatory agency. So her report will be going to scientists and hydrologists at Department of Ecology, who will make a scientific, professional interpretation based on her study.
Are we going to get the draft we requested four weeks ago?
There is not going to be a draft. There's going to be a study that will be completed.
When will it be completed?
We've been working on it. It's a lot of data and a lot of processing.
So it's not simply going back and recalculating the numbers. Council has done significant rezoning of our entire city. And so she, Nicole, is having to look at an individual parcel-by-parcel assessment. And she has to make an estimation of what's going to happen over the next 50 years on each parcel, and then calculate the water use on each parcel.
Lonnie, all I can say is that that is not acceptable to me. We'll work it out, but that's not acceptable.
In terms of all of the data that I presented, most of it was all published in terms of the, all of the ROE documents. And so all of, a lot of this is stuff that was published in the early 2000s.
We have that.
And then everything, and then everything else has been published in the annual reports that are submitted to Department of Ecology, the Talalups, the Snoqualmie Tribe, every year.
The supply-demand stats, I don't believe that.
Yeah. They were part of...
The new supply-demand statistics?
All of, I'm not sure that I know what you're referring to, but the supply and demand is from 2004, and that was from the water right. And then the 2000...
So you're basing your projections on those old data?
So the purpose of this is not for a debate between two people, but the slides shown tonight were within reports that have been filed with Ecology. They're not part of a report. I mean, we're not going to be presenting something to the citizens before we submit it to Ecology. So we're going to be submitting it to Ecology from our consultant. It's, it is going to be her professional recommendation, Michael. It's not an opinion piece. It's a professional recommendation.
Expect to be opposed. Change. All the change.
I'm sorry, I think there's another question.
Okay. Regarding some of the slides, it's a real quick look, but one thing that we've got to realize, we can't deal with averages. And when you're looking at instantaneous water demand, it's the time of year that's really important around here. And also, climate change is going to be something that we need to include. And I'm wondering, have you included and put considerations in your report for climate change? And also, second question on that, have you looked at what SPU is doing with regard to their reservoirs and their storage, and what their considerations are with regard to climate change?
So we requested projections from SPU for their climate change. They've told us at this point that they're not ready to be used for decision-making.
Can't use it?
That's what we've been told up to this point. They're still draft. So that's what we've been told.
So you're not using climate change in this?
So we are using, we are not working yet on the projections. We are currently working on trying to get the what's happening at each parcel correct. But we have requested the data from SPU to answer your question. The projections that were done a decade ago were based on very, very conservative, taking every single worst-case month for the rivers. We took, if a day ever triggered in the last, I think it was 60 years of data, we assumed that that day would trigger every single year. So not to what we were talking about, where, you know, it does depend a lot on the year and whether it's a wet year or dry year, when it rains, and so on and so forth. We took the worst case on every single day for every rigor point. We then took the worst case ever measured at Hobo Springs. And then we took the highest peak demand for every single day from the city's water system. So we put, the worst of the worst happened on literally every single day to come up with the water supply and demand forecast. Obviously, we all live on the same planet. The worst doesn't happen every single day, every single year. So those were the ways that we did the projections, to try to be conservative, to try to account for all of the worst possible things that we could come up with, was to take every worst thing every single day. I don't know that that answers your question, but that's how we did it.
Michael Thomas had some earlier questions, actually, related to the VFD project, and it's something I've actually been following for a while. And I've expressed some concerns about it. I actually understand that our approach is to, you know, attempt to utilize Mount Si Springs better, to take more water from it. Have, really, two questions. Has the, has the city really established the amount of water that's available during dry season from Mount Si Springs? I mean, I've looked at the data from 2009 to 2017, and it, the flow gets quite low in the summer, like 2015 and 2016, so. And actually, I have requested the data going back 40 years, and I only realized that only the data from 2009 was available. So I'd be concerned about how we move forward with, you know, drier climate, less snowpack. So I'm kind of curious as to how that figured in, because we get more water, if we're thinking we're going to get more water from Mount Si, well, that's less demand on Centennial, which means less mitigation water demand, which is a good thing. That costs us money. My second concern, and City Council is definitely aware of this, was that in a bill, AB 11, AB 18-011, the city disclosed that it had telemetry problems with the past data that came from Mount Si Springs. Both the volume, the volume and the telemetry was underestimated there, as well as the bypass flow was also incorrect. What has been done to actually correct the old data? So that was one of the items that was discussed when the, when the two probes that you referred to were replaced, one of which measures the volume, the other which measures the bypass flow, there was a discovery of an error. So if that data is used, how has it, how has it been corrected? Because that really is a function of how much water we get from Mount Si. Maybe it's a better question for Mark or Dawn for that second question. And then the first question is, what kind of water have we estimated that we're going to get from Mount Si as a result of the VFD project?
Well, maybe I can just address the first question.
Yeah, maybe the second part may be better for Mark or Dawn.
And could I ask folks to just ask one question at a time, so others get an opportunity too, please?
The plan is not to use more water from Mount Si. It's to make sure that when the water is being used from Mount Si, that there's very carefully no violation of the water right.
Leave for ECFs always.
So, so I just want to be clear, there's no, like, extra water coming from Mount Si. There's no, that, that's not part of the plan for the VFDs. You know, those pumps were originally installed when it was the only water supply for the city. And to maintain and support fire flows, the city was very concerned about making sure that there was an excess amount of pumping capacity there to manage worst-case emergency situations. Obviously, you know, that's a really important thing up here. Fire, forest fires happen. The city really felt like they needed to have that extra pumping capacity out at the spring. Since at least the late 1990s, adding variable frequency drives out at the spring was part of the recommended improvements for the spring plant. City... City had, you know, finally had the money and the resources to go forward to do that project. I think it's a great project, because it does help to improve the overall management of the water supplies. So.
So, yeah, the, we're talking about the flow meter issue and the level sensor in the pond.
Yeah, I understand it was discovered under replacement that there was mis-calibration. So how has that data been used, or would that data be used to estimate?
So what, what we will do is go back to the paper records. You've got copies of numerous years' worth of paper records for out there. Those are as reliable, if not more so, than, than the telemetry data.
The telemetry, which will use the paper records.
Correct.
Do we have any other questions, comments?
I'll ask questions one at a time. Any other questions?
Hold on, please, let me get you the microphone. You do.
Jean, I know you and your organization. I respect and appreciate conservancy, the environment. But there's more people in the room.
Agreed.
And when I get in a room with you, it feels like it's all about you. Now, I have to take time and come up here all the time and meet privately with all these individuals. Or I sit in on their commissions or their meetings. And so it can't just always be about, because you feel like you come in here loaded for bear. You know, I disagree with these people up here, too, on certain things. But this just, it's been months now that I've just sat here and I've thought, give the floor to you, because I do believe in what you're trying to do if it's water conservation. But it doesn't always feel like that.
May I answer a question? May I answer your question?
Absolutely.
Okay, first of all, we have specifically requested that Jack Winchester be able to meet with Mark Regos and Don.
I've been in all the meetings where you've said, you know what, I don't get what I want all the time either.
No, no, we asked the mayor and Lonnie just to have a meeting with these two gentlemen, and were turned down.
And I've also been at the Salau meeting where your organization completely overturned that meeting.
I think we need to keep this to Q and A, so we can use our staff time wisely here. Do we have any other questions? Well, while we're getting ready for Michael's question, I guess one of the things I've heard about what the city is doing about the Cascade Water Right, and I just wanted to comment, is the city really wants to be meeting all the parameters of our permit. And I've heard some say that we're doing this so that we can either promote growth or allow additional growth. And I don't know if any of you have been watching what the City Council has been doing lately, but besides the downzoning and the recent action they took with the sewer concurrency, but they're very concerned about really slowing some of the residential growth besides those that are vested, because they have a legal right to move forward, and saving the capacity for commercial development. But what this secondary mitigation source is, is really for the citizens that are in this room. I know most of you are Salau water users, but I think there's at least one who's on our city water right. But for the person who is on our city water right, we have an obligation to have a secondary mitigation source. So we're trying to comply with the parameters of that permit. And we've sought for ten years to reach an agreement with your board, and we haven't been successful. And for some reason, you guys are very fearful of us entering into an agreement with your board. If we can't get a secondary mitigation source from you, which I think would be helpful for all of us, because as Nicole said, if there is an earthquake, even if it's our third mitigation source, it's redundancy and it's good for all of us. But even if we can't, we've got to find a secondary mitigation source. So this trying to stop us, even if you're not on our water system, I don't understand, because it's not about development. It really is about trying to be good fiduciaries of the water system and having a secondary mitigation source, so that we aren't depleting the river. So it is about water conservation. So that's my soapbox for a moment. Go ahead, Michael. Let me just stop for a minute. I wanted to introduce our council member, Ross Loudonback. Thank you for coming in. The other council members would have loved to have been here, but they're all out of town. So I just wanted to let you know.
I guess the follow-on question on, on that was really to understand the reasoning behind the selection of the golf course and the quantity of the mitigation water might be there is quite low. You know, it's quite, it's already subject, just a teeny amount of water, you know, three to five acre feet, when the Snoqualmie is low. I read the Ecology Field Report in March. Maybe you get another ten or twelve acre feet from the pond from that as a result. So as, you know, if the drive is a secondary source, you know, considering in the past, you know, the old report said we needed to have, you know, up to 240 some odd acre feet from Salau held kind of as a backup. That was the 35%. Why is the golf course being pursued? It's just a fraction. It's, you know, maybe, you know, fifteen, twenty acre feet in the, in the dry season.
So if you pay attention to the water rights in the basin, there aren't many water rights. And there are very few that are senior to the river. So, you know, you can look at it from a whole bunch of different perspectives, but I guess my perspective is to say, you know, if that water is going to get used for something else, it might as well come under the bigger planning umbrella of the municipality, of the water reuse for the community. That's, otherwise, it's, you know, who knows what it's going to be used for? And I don't know that I am fully in support, on a personal basis, of having it used for irrigation. I mean, for the most part, that meant that it was water taken from the river and evaporated for a golf course. So I guess my view is that it's a better opportunity for water conservation, for resiliency of the system.
Well, I can tell you what it was going to be used for, either a big RV park or a subdivision of eleven homes. So, I mean, I think using it as part of a municipal water right is better than what it was going to be used for.
You know, there's just not that many. So why not, you know, pull everything that can be pulled into a good planning umbrella?
Can I have a follow-up question, I guess? Sure, why not? One of the things that actually...
One of the things that actually attracted me to looking at this problem was actually what happened in 2015. We had a very extremely dry year. I noticed from the reports, you know, we had, you know, two months of very little or zero mitigation water available from Hobo Springs, you know. Another month was quite dry. You know, as a Salau member, I'm very concerned that, you know, we have enough water, you know, as we, if we were to actually join the two systems together. And I want to articulate this, because I think it's a fair concern that many Salau members have, is that, you know, if we join our two systems in the way that's proposed, do we have enough water going forward for both of our growth? Do we have enough mitigation water in consideration of, you know, dry years, climate change? And that's really, I think, a concern that all the Salau members have, and I think it's a very fair one. This is why people are asking for the replanning, for the, we see a tremendous amount of growth. I just wanted to say was, you know, can someone explain a little bit more about 2015? I've read actually the 2019 Seattle Water System Plan, and they've actually said they have their own concerns about even filling their own reservoirs. And one of those, both those reservoirs are mitigation sources. So can you explain, I would like to hear a little bit more explanation about maybe what happened during 2015, because that attracted me to the problem. You know, are we running out of mitigation water? Can we survive years like 2015 in light of all the extra demand? That's where I think a lot of these questions are coming from, concerned, from concerned citizens, is, you know, where, how do we survive years like 2015 when we're expected to have double our 2035 growth? That's where these really questions are coming from. And I really wanted to redirect, I'm trying not to be mean or, you know, obnoxious, but that's, that's the concern, I think, of many of the Salau members, and that's what attracted me to the problem. So I'd really like to hear from everyone up here, is, you know, what's, how do we, how do we survive years like 2015 considering growth?
Yeah, you take the first whack at it.
Okay, you know, that's a huge question. And I think it gets to, you know, planning, zoning, community priorities, individual choices, and all of that falls under the umbrella of, you know, municipalities or water systems' obligation to supply water, right? To protect human beings, and then our, our joint community decisions to protect the earth. Okay? So your question is an enormous one. It is, having worked up here for a long time, I think that there's a lot of power with working together, rather than working against each other. And right now, you know, this meeting, I feel like should be people sitting around a table trying to figure out what the best planning opportunities are and the most effective ways that we can use all of these different water supplies. Because there is a lot of water up here. People have identified, you know, there's a lot of water during the winter, and that's one of the reasons why we want to use the Sentinel well during the winter, because it, for the most part, doesn't need to be mitigated, except when it's cold and dry and snowy. But properly planning storage as a big community, properly planning which water supplies are used when, when they're most available, when their impacts to the overall hydrologic system are minimized. That's really what the goal is here. And that's always been my goal. That was always the goal of Ecology and the Talalups when we were working on all of this planning. And really, you know, I think that's where we need to head. And certainly, SPU and how they're planning to operate their system is part of that. But by working together, acquiring the water rights that are out there, and coming under one comprehensive approach, there's a lot of power as a community to do that.
And I guess as to 2015, I mean, we did have, you know, you talk about, we all believe, I mean, those of us that manage water systems, we believe climate change is happening, and it will impact water supply. We believe that's a thing. And we're looking at that as we look at water projections. We did have a significant drought and a lack of water supply in 2015. We've talked about what happened, but we did fail. I mean, this is, this was my wake-up call to really zero in on, we need the secondary mitigation source. This is what started my personal path on being really waking up to what was in our permit, was 2015, because we were unable to mitigate for a few days. And it was a combination of Hobo Springs going dry. I had an employee that was supposed to be checking those, you know, those, the SCADA readings every day that, that checked it. So I had to mitigate, failed to mitigate. And so day two had a double amount to mitigate, and the well was, I mean, the Hobo Springs just had hardly any water. So it was like a, you know, it was like a catch-22. He had set himself up for failure. So by the time I got called to the woodshed at Ecology with the tribe, we were in trouble. And I wasn't, you know, I wasn't that in tune to the permit. I read the permit and I said, oh, my gosh, we need the secondary mitigation source. Went back and looked, and there'd been some discussions. And I'd met a few times and talked about the, you know, Salau Water Agreement. And we had been unsuccessful for many years trying to reach an agreement for various reasons I won't go into. But we did things at that point in time. In 2015, we hired a full-time employee, and all that employee does is look at those valves in the SCADA. And we're constantly managing the supply. So part of why, you know, that one chart Nicole showed you where it looks like, oh, my gosh, why haven't you been using more water since you've added all those households? We all know this place has been growing, so our water supply should be going like that. It's not just the front-loading washers. Part of it is, we're all paying for a full-time employee that is just managing the water supply more effectively. So, you know, and we're fixing leaks, and we're doing things like that. So it's, but we want to be compliant with our permit, and we want to figure out a way to do it. But I do need to reiterate, this isn't about, I mean, look at your council's actions. It's not about building more single-family residential. It's putting in a secondary source so that we can continue to meet whoever the one person is that's on our water utility, meet your water supply. Because I know the rest of you are on Salau, and you don't care, but whoever's, whoever's, are you part of our water system? I think somebody said they were.
Because you did mention zoning a couple times.
Yeah.
And I think zoning is really critical. And when you talk about the number of households going in per acre is really, really critical, and that's what's shown up.
Well, I'll tell you something that's totally counter... Yeah, so we're, we're looking at some additional ordinances. You know, council did a lot of reduction in density, and it's somewhat counterintuitive, but Michael was chatting before folks got here about his water use. He was really proud that he was at a certain point. And I heard Nicole say, well, what's your irrigation? He goes, oh, well, no, no, that's not my irrigation. And really, the biggest problem we have is, are the peaks for irrigation as far as what that does to our water supply? Because it's, you're irrigating, when do we have a problem? July, August, September, and that's when people are irrigating. So council did a lot of downzoning. They created this constrained low-density residential zone, which is one house for every two acres. And so there, it's, it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty, like, suburban, I mean, rural, rural zone. And they did it through most of the city that wasn't either kind of, somebody had come in and talked about developing it, but everything that hadn't come into the UGA or come into the city yet. So by doing that, you would think, well, gosh, that's a lot less toilets and a lot less washer and dryers, and a lot less disposals. And that's really going to reduce our water use. It doesn't, does just the opposite. So until we get ordinances in place that really talk about how we, what we do with irrigation and what we do with drought-tolerant plants, it actually increases our water use, because it's irrigation that really kills us.
Any other questions? Actually, go ahead, please, please.
How much longer do you want to go?
Um, I'm, what are you, are you okay for like, let's, let's, let's go to 8:30 if people are comfortable doing that? Are you, do you want to get out of here, because I know you have a family thing?
I'm okay for the moment.
Okay, all right, okay.
Dave Edwards with Salau. I have a question about the emergency situations. We talked about the potential for earthquakes. Are there specific laws that go into play in the event that that happens? Are you still required to mitigate during those time periods? Can we have emergency interties? How does that all work?
I mean, that's one of the things that's being looked at on the full regional basis, basically, the whole, you know, Everett to Tacoma footprint. And the most susceptible are the small water systems that are semi-rural, because of the expectation of the difficulty of moving emergency supplies, the lack of backup piping and other things. So those interties and that ability to have emergency secondary supply and to have particularly groundwater supplies, which are known to be more resilient, based on all of the studies that have been done in earthquake areas, than surface water supplies. So that opportunity is a huge one. In terms of laws, you know, Ecology will certainly consider extreme catastrophic events in, in a determination of a violation.
I think a concern for rural water associations is brittle pipes. So if you have asbestos concrete or PVC, that stuff will shear very quickly. If you have high-density polyethylene pipe or ductile iron, stuff's a lot stronger underground, so it'll hold. And so with a lot of the new developments and our new public work standards that we've had on the books, we're requiring ductile iron pipe, high-density polyethylene pipe, et cetera, with really strong fittings and so forth. So those should hold in a lot of the earthquakes. But yeah, where the pipes are older and more brittle, those things could fracture. And then you may not have water pressure, and you may not have water.
Right. And I think when I was re-looking at the resiliency report, and I really do encourage you to go to that Water Forum website, there was a figure that just struck me that the South Wouldbe Island Fault Zone, I mean, it basically runs right through this community.
I'm a Salau, I've been a Salau member for twenty-five-plus years now. So I just want to focus on that aspect for a moment. As you know, the ROE for Sentinel committed Salau to a 35% of its annual right, 243.6 acre feet. And it committed it to 100% of, so either Salau's one or two, and 25% of the other one for an... for an instantaneous supply. Now, you know, we're sitting in SLAL here right now and you count Willard, Nissarim at about 2,300 or so connections, 3,000, and it becomes perfected. It's, so, we don't have the kind of margin in SLAL to take on that kind of commitment for mitigation. So, why, can you tell me why now? And I know Nicole, that the 35%-
I wasn't part, yeah, of any of those negotiations. So, I can't, I can't tell you. That was a number that was provided to me as part of the MOU that was signed between SLAL and City of North Bend. That, that's what I knew at the time. And that's the numbers that I used for planning. Because that's what was provided.
You mean in 2004?
Mm-hmm.
Because I, I see in your 2007 February report, which is pretty extensive, I see you cite the 35% and you have the tables in there to support that of projected, projected needs and such. And so, so, and then that was carried over. Most of your words from that report were carried over into the ROE, actually.
Exactly, yeah. And so, I don't, you know, I'll, I'll be honest, I don't know exactly where those numbers came from. I will tell you that the growth projections that I showed in that table for North Bend include the SLAL area, within the urban growth area. So, there was always conceived of water being sold and water being purchased between the two systems. The details of that were part of negotiations between the city and city administrators and the SLAL Water Association. And I was not involved in those negotiations. So, I don't, I don't know the details behind it. So, I'm sorry, I, maybe you do because you were part of the Water Association at that point.
In fairness to you, you know, I, I know in that report we're talking about, the reference for SLAL's commitment was a personal communication between Bob Pancost, who was kind of working for SLAL, and Tom Boers, who was the Seattle lawyer, who was orchestrating the whole thing. And, and that was the only reference to that commitment.
And that's the only thing I had.
So, here, yeah, and it's kind of mysterious. So, here I am today, a SLAL member. Why would I support a contract between SLAL and the city to give away, not give away, but to, to appropriate that much of their water right to, for mitigation of Centennial? Why would I do that?
I think it's because of that joint interest in the urban growth area, right? Because by the city supplying water from the Centennial well to the urban growth area, that, that, and I haven't looked at the numbers, but my, my suspicion is that the urban growth area projections on how much water was about 35% of the SLAL system. And so, I, I would guess, and this is truly a guess, a knowledgeable guess, but not one based on being at all privy to the communications at that time or even subsequently hearing from people that this was the case. But that water, the intent was to supply as much off of the Centennial well as possible to the urban growth area, based on using the Centennial well when there's excess flows in the Snoqualmie River. And then being able to work both water systems and all of the water rights to the overall benefit of the community and saying, okay, well, these water rights we can use during, because they're senior to the river, we can use these during lower flows. And so, both water systems then can meet all of their obligations.
Well-
So, that, that's why.
You're kind of saying that if you grab up mitigation sources around about, it might be able to reduce SLAL's commitment somehow? I mean, somehow it has to be reduced. You can't go with those kind of numbers that I mentioned. There's just not enough water in SLAL to do that. You know, I, I talked to Denny, Superintendent, just recently. They're struggling to keep it up with one well this summer. And, you know, that doesn't translate into giving a, well, a one and a plus quarter wells. But I don't have two, really. Edward Willard doesn't have anything.
Right, and like I said, you know, the intent would be to supply water from the Centennial well as well.
For the UGA, correct?
Yes, and I understand and that there are water storage issues and, you know, I've certainly heard reports that there's some challenges with water pressure in various locations in the water system.
3,094 acre-feet for Centennial includes, that's what I understand, 967 acre-feet or the UGA could within SLAL's charter term. Now, I don't know why there's a more discussion about that out here. Get it right out in the open. Why don't we get it out in the open? That was the plan, right?
Right, right. And, and that was-
Where do I see that plan? You know, disentmate it anyway.
Well, no, but I think, I think that's, that's part of why the SLAL intertie makes sense. Is because I don't know that, I mean, the idea isn't, if SLAL doesn't have memberships left, the idea is if the Centennial well provides water to SLAL, we can't allow you to use that water outside the UGA. Our permit doesn't allow that. But to the extent that you can then use that water to deliver it to your members within our UGA, that may provide additional water to you that you could give to us for mitigation water. You see what I'm saying? So, that's, that's a possibility.
But it's really using, I mean, it's essentially using all of the water systems, you know, in concert with each other rather than in contrast with each other.
Right.
So, when you guys do this study that you're doing, are you really going to look at merged SLAL city operation? Do you really try to balance out all the resources, supply and demand? Are you going to try to do that in your study?
We would like to. It is strongly dependent on SLAL providing the data that will ultimately be needed to do that work, so.
Well-
SLAL has to provide a few data.
We are still working on identifying all of the data that would be necessary to complete all of these studies. We have not asked for, we've asked for one round of data. We received some, we're working through that data. We have additional data requests that we know that we need to, to make. And then I don't know that that's going to be the last one. So, but it's, it's dependent on having all of the information that would be required, right?
Just, you know, one other question. You know, Cascade, doesn't it seem kind of strange to you that, that we might be in a situation where, as I understand it, you're going to take water from what's the old Sturts well, turned into the Cascade well, have it water right cut in half and put on monthly allocations? And we're going to take water from that and put it right over into South Fork and then one mile downstream. We're going to take that water out to Centennial and give some of it-
I mean, that's how water rights work, right? And it's subject to Ecology's approval. But, I mean, ultimately, you know, water rights are first in time, first in right. That's a 1960 water right. It just, that's our water law and that's what we work with.
It doesn't matter for the river, really. It's just water rights.
It's, it's the way our laws work here.
Yeah. Why wouldn't you, wouldn't a sensible thing just produce the water right by a certain amount? Leave it at that amount?
How many times have I said that to Ecology?
We, we, we have, we have suggested that. We have suggested that.
Yes, we have suggested that.
Many times.
I saw that in the original, in the C Centennial, I saw that.
Um, there are certainly reasons why that would be a preference to substantively, yeah, to substantively provide, you know, that secondary source of mitigation. It makes it more difficult because the volume to, you know, cover those few days when Hobo Springs might not be available are, are larger than would be allowed. So, there has to be a water storage component and then a water release component under very, you know, drought situation, so.
I don't know if everybody here understands it, but your Goover February 2007 report-
You probably know it better than I do and I wrote it.
So, it, it made this connectivity, as people hear about hydraulic connectivity between wells and rivers. Well, you showed very clearly in your report there that just how powerful this is with Centennial well. You know, 60% of the water withdrawn from the Centennial well is felt in the river in just two days.
Yes.
90% is felt in six days, right?
Um, like I said, you're probably-
That's what you said.
I, I have the report here.
Yeah, that's what you said.
We can refer to it.
Okay, so, we've got about six minutes left if anyone else wants to-
This isn't something with a big, long lag time to it. That's what I'm trying to make the point. This, this happened pretty fast. And that's why, you know, your 20-day period in the algorithm, it picks up 95%.
Right, well, and-
With all your different tailing options that you ended up with.
Right, and what ends up happening, and I think it's important for everyone here to understand, is that by including all of that, all the different options for tailing and the timing for peaks and so on and so forth, the outcome is over mitigation to the river. So, where the requirement is drop-for-drop mitigation. Because we don't ever know the hydraulic properties perfectly. The way that we set that up is that it essentially requires, I think it ends up being about 20% over mitigation to encompass all of that variability of what the timing could be. So, the city doesn't just do drop-for-drop, they do drop-for-drop plus 20-ish.
I'll put in one last point for the toll. That should have been done 2007. Who would know, we said here, have this like the most robust mitigation source we could have. And look, I walked the entire route myself on that pipeline. And it's not a big fault. And that's the vibe between the two waters at about 100 foot wide. So, gravity fed 12-inch pipe, 23,260 feet. So, it was cost of 1.7 to 2.3 million?
It was 2.7 million 12 years ago. And I think, and, and costs of construction have gone up.
No, it's 4.7, I thought. Forgot to look at the number. We updated the cost estimate, but I don't remember what it is.
Yeah, from Grand Osborne. And, and we know that construction costs have gone way up in the last 11 years. In fact, the last couple of years, they've, construction materials have gone up 10 to 20% in cases and labor prevailing wage. It's, it's, it's not a $1 million project, I can tell you that. I haven't, but I, I have no construction very well.
I could ask a couple of questions, but actually, I wanted to go back to planning a little bit. I know a lot of our emphasis has been residential growth. How are we factoring in business and commercial use in the planning? I mean, we have a lot of, we've since, since have rezoned, so, we've eliminated some of the residential and neighborhood business. We've got huge tracks out by the Truck Town that we've been trying to develop. We're trying to develop our downtown into, you know, more tourist. How does business demands factor into our planning? How do we account for, you know, those usage? Because again, it's very easy, maybe not easy, but projecting residential, you know, hey, we've got this zoning, this density, that's relatively straightforward. How are we planning for business growth?
So, from an infrastructure standpoint, I think Mark and Don are going to have to answer that. From a water demand standpoint, we're using the industrial and current water use from the commercial accounts within the city and trying to get a good handle on what the demands are based on a lot size and what the peaks look like and use that as the basis. That's the best basis that we have. We'll go out to regional planning documents and sort of use those as a point of comparison. But, you know, water use within the area where the water is going to be used is, is probably the best indicator for that. And certainly, if the city was looking at a high water demand user, we'd let them know. That would be a different condition. One of the things that we're trying to do in this update is trying to make it more flexible from a planning standpoint. So, that if a zoning or there's a individual user that comes in and we have a better understanding of what their water demand would look like, that we can actually plug that into the model and then directly output what does that do to the water supply in a much more interactive and much more robust way, rather than just have a couple of numbers and we're trying to interpolate between two points that are, you know, like 15 years apart. That's much more difficult from a planning standpoint. And it's much more difficult for a city and administrators to make good decisions for a community.
Yeah, water conservation is huge in some of the new projects. One of the projects that is on the books potentially is Snoqualmie Valley Athletic Association is several turf fields. So, using turf instead of grass doesn't require that irrigation. So, that's much less impact on the water system. One of the things we've talked to our Parks District about is decreasing the amount of watering in August, July, September, just, just reducing that amount because that's when those peaks are coming. Third, in our building code is using, first, a lot of these new homes is low-flow toilets, low-flow faucets, et cetera. So, conservation is, is really important to, to do.
And council just adopted new landscape regs at their last meeting. They increased the percentage of drought tolerant plants and did some other things that will impact conservation on irrigation, so.
Well, since we only have a couple of minutes left, is there anything Nicole or staff or council members would like to say in closing?
Yeah, I wanted to say a couple of comments. First, always good that people come out. Thank you. Huge kudos to Nicole. I mean, I think you summed it up. We're here to get along. So, if we still don't have each other's numbers, let's share numbers. I've heard things like, originally, we were expecting a certain amount of mitigation from SLAL. Naturally, you guys need to provide service to your customers. I, for the benefit of my citizens, can't rely on like, we're going to get anything from SLAL. And I'm in a risk management position here based on mitigation. So, Gary, thanks for looking at extra capacity storage. It's what we've looked at. I've taken a harder look at the toll. It is multimillion dollars today, let alone by the time we build it. Is Cascade, Michael, going to give us everything? Probably not, but it's actually really good value for what we'd get for it. And hopefully, we can work some more on some conservation. But I just really commend Nicole by like, let's, let's be together. We all live in the same community, whether it's SLAL or North Bend. We have a responsibility to each other and ultimately to the earth. So, thank you, Nicole.
With that, thank you again for coming. We really appreciate you staying a little extra time and your comments and feedback. Again, this, this meeting was recorded, so it will be televised on NBTV and on our website. So, thanks for coming. And Jill, can they get copies of the PowerPoint from you then?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, guys.